Organizacional meeting and the first hearing of the Committee on Justice and Human Rights. With the presence of a quorum, the chair declares... This hearing is hereby called to order. The chair declares the presence of a quorum. May we request this secretary, acting secretary, attorney-mortem to acknowledge and confirm our... well, the members of the committee, just for the record.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Honorable Senate President. For the record, Mr. Chair, the members of the committee are as follows. You as the chairperson and Senator Pia Cayetano as the vice-chairperson. Members will be Senator J V Ersito, Senator Risa Ontiveros, Senator Bam Aquino, Senator Erwin Tulfo, and Senator Joel Villanueva. They are likewise joined by our ex-official members, Sir Senate President Pro Tempore, Senator Panfilo Lacson, Senator Majority Leader Juan Miguel Migzubiri, and Senate Minority Leader Alan Peter Cayetano.
Thank you very much to our committee secretary. Being an organizational meeting, the committee adopts the rules of the Senate and the Senate Rules of Procedure governing inquiries in aid of legislations.
Mr. Chairman, I saw move that the rules be adopted.
And duly seconded. The committee adopts the rules of the Senate and the Senate Rules of Procedure governing inquiries in aid of legislations. So adopted. May we now... Mr. President, the chairman will give the opening statement. Magandang hapon po sa inyong lahat. Ngayong hapon ay pagsisimula ng mga pagdinig ng komite sa pamamagitan ng talakayan sa Senate Bill 121215 o ang Infrastructure Anomalies Investigation Act of 2025. At ngayon dahil sa bilyong pisong flood control scam, marami ang sumisigaw sa kalye nasusuklam sa mga palengke at bukid na mumuhi sa bus, jeep, at grab. At sinasabing ikulong na 'yan, mga kurakot. Kaya kasama ang ating mga inanyahang resource persons mula sa DOJ, NBI, CHR, ICI, private sector organizations, pag-uusapan natin ang Senate Bill 1215 na panokala ni the Senate President Soto at Senators Erwin Tulfo at Ontiveros. Nilalayon ito ang magtatag ng isang Independent People's Commission or IPC, isang permanente at nonpartisan na ahensya ng pamalaan na nakatuon lamang sa pagsisiyasat ng katibulian at mga anomalia sa mga proyekto sa infrastruktura ng pamalaan. Kung may sasabatas, ang komisyon ito ay magiging mas malakas at mas malaya kumpara sa kasulukuyang ICI sa ilalim ng isang executive order. Ang Senate Bill 1215 ay nagbibigay sa IPC ng statutory permanence, ganap na kalayaan, at garantizado ang transparency at fiscal autonomy. Ang mga kapangyarihang instraktura at pagpupondo ng komisyon ay ilalagay sa batas. Kaya magiging ligtas at protektado ang pondo, pulisiya, at pagpapatupad mula sa maaring panghimasok ng politika. Saklaw ng horisdiksyon ng IPC, ang lahat ng proyektong pang-infrastruktural, national, o local man sisiguraduhin ang pananagutan sa mga proyekto tulad ng edukasyon, agrikultura, flood control, disaster resilience, at iba pa. Komposisyon ito ay may limang membro na magkakasamang hihirangin ang kongreso at ng podikatura para tiyak ang kalayaan mula sa executive. Ang bawat pagsisiyasat ay dapat makumpleto sa loob lamang ng anim na pong araw, at ang mga natuklasan ay may sasa publiko sa loob ng tatlong araw dahil ang pagkaantala ng katotohanan ay pagkait ng hustisia. Truth delayed is justice denied. Ayon binabago ng Senate Bill 1215 ang isam pansamantalang ahensya na pinamumunuan ng executive tungo sa isang institusyon na permanente, independiente, may pananagutan sa publiko. Dahil sa pamamahala, dahil sa pamamahala, ang ibig sabihin ng pagiging bukas o transparent ay gumagana ang katarungan merong functional justice. Hinihiling natin sa Pangulo na rin na isertify as urgent itong panokalang batas na ito. With that, may we know if the Senate President has an opening statement?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This will be very quick. First, I wish to thank you, Senator Francis Pagalina and the Chairman of the Committee on Justice for the hearing that you have called and particularly during the organizational meeting of your committee. So thank you and congratulations for that. And then I would like to address and thank the our distinguished resource persons who are with us this morning. Thank you very much for your presence. Perhaps we will ask the Senate, the committee secretary to introduce them later. But because of the swift filing that I wanted to do for Senate Bill 1215, they were creating the Independent People's Commission, I failed, perhaps not failed is the word. I did not realize that there were the other necessities that should be included in the bill. So therefore, with that as an opening, may I include interior records, Mr. Chairman? These provisions that I hope you will include in the bill after you ready study and sponsor it. First is the availability of the hearings to the public of the IPC. Now, due to the public clamor for transparency, of course, and accountability, hearings must be available to the public. So it's subject to the executive or closed-door hearings and sessions. And then second is the grant of powers to strengthen Section 4 of the EO 94-2025 so that penalty will be applicable to private individuals, alright? And then an authority or personality to file cases before the proper courts or agency. They must be given that power. And a power to recommend witness for witness protection program. And fifth, recommend or request the freezing of assets. They be given that power. And then recommend the immediate preventive suspension of suspects in government agencies. And perhaps lastly, to recommend the... They be able to recommend the whole departure order or other remedies to limit the travel abroad of these personalities who will be investigated. And again, this Independent People's Commission that we would like to push for, Your Honor, Mr. Chairman, and our resource persons, is not limited to infrastructure. It is encompassing. It will include everything. All, everything that would need investigation of the people in the different sectors of government. So with that, thank you, Senator Pagalina. Thank you very much to everybody. Thank you. Good afternoon.
Thank you very much to the Senate President. May we now request the committee secretary to place on record the presence of our resource persons in this hearing this afternoon.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mapagpalang hapon po sa ating lahat, Honorable Senate President, Mr. Chairman. For the Department of Justice, they are represented today by Chief State Counsel Dennis Arvin Elchan, sir.
No need to stand up. Just you may raise your hand or just acknowledge the chair. Thank you.
Also with the DOJ is General Katapang and Asef Alpereras from the Bureau of Customs. From the Commission on Human Rights, we have chairperson Richard P. Palpallatok and with him is Attorney Gemma Parohinog. From the Department of Public Works and Highways, they are represented today by Asef Melody Villar. She is the incoming Assistant Secretary for Legal Service. From the DBM, we have Attorney Tricia M. Baraan from the Budget Information and Legislative Service. Likewise, Mr. Chair, we have Honorable Retired Chief Justice Renato Puno in our panel today as well as Honorable Former Senator Franklin M. Delon. Good afternoon, sir. Former Senate President, sir. Good afternoon. From the Independent Commission for Infrastructure, ICI, we have the chairperson, retired Justice, Honorable Justice Andres B. Reyes Jr., sir. And he is likewise joined by a member of the ICI, former Secretary Roelio Elsingson. From the People's Budget Coalition, we have the co-convenor, Professor Kenneth Abante. And from the Makati Business Club, Chairman Edgar Ochoa is represented by their executive director, Mr. Rafael Giyongpin. We have sent, for the record, Mr. Chairman, we sent an invitation to the Management Association of the Philippines, but they send their regrets because of a conflict of schedule. That is all, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon.
Thank you, Attorney Mortel. We can now proceed. But before we ask for whether or not our resource persons will deliver their opening statements, just one quick interjection here. One of the reasons why we felt the need to conduct this hearing immediately, it was in part prompted by the news item wherein the spouses disguise publicly said they will no longer cooperate with the ICI. That sort of troubled this representation because given the enormity and the huge, how do you call it, controversy surrounding the biggest, largest corruption scandal in the country's history, you have persons refusing to cooperate and publicly saying so. And that's why we feel perhaps it's time to review the powers of the ICC. Perhaps give it additional, well, the need to perhaps give it additional powers so that it can aggressively and vigorously pursue its investigation without such unacceptable public pronouncements from those who may be, who are or being directly involved or being accused of massive corruption practices. So with that, do we know, we would like to know if any of the resource persons have prepared an opening statement? The former Senate President, Frank Delon, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Senate President. Good afternoon. Mr. Chairman, at the outset, allow me to express my appreciation to your committee for setting, for hearing Senate Bill 1215, even if the Senate is on break. And in that regard, let me express my appreciation for the effort of the Senate President in filing this very important measure. Now, I consider the passage of this law as very urgent. And in that regard, I join the call of our chairman to request the president to certify this measure as urgent. Why do I consider this measure as urgent? Mr. Chairman, I think it cannot be denied that our people today are angry. They are angry because of what they see to be the massive corruption in government. Mr. Chairman, I was in the Senate for 24 years and in the executive department for nine years. I have never seen a corruption of this magnitude during the 34 years that I was in public service. And today, Mr. Chairman, in public gatherings, you hear people in unison chanting anti-corruption drives. I was Sunday, last Sunday, I was in the LaSalle UP game and basketball game. And for the first time, I see the two cheering squads of these rival universities cheering one chant. Ikulong ang kurakot. Ikulong na 'yan. And this is a reflection of how our people feel today. And many, and often the question is asked, how did we get here? How did we get to witness such massive corruption in our midst? I have a simple answer to me, Mr. Chairman. It is the culture of impunity that we see in our midst today. And this impunity to me is because of the failure of people, of our people, of our citizenry to observe the rule of law. They have disregarded the rule of law because people feel that they can get away with wrongdoing. They feel that they can commit crimes without fear of being punished. In other words, Mr. Chairman, in my humble opinion, it is the failure of our justice system. And I was part of that once, a Secretary of Justice for four years. Indeed, I must admit that, you know, I may have failed to do what is needed in order to improve at least the perception of our people on our justice system. And the failure is from the investigation, prosecution, adjudication, and in the punishment case. There is a failure of our institutions to enforce compliance with the law. And therefore, we see the impunity that we see today in our society. But talking of institutions, we have enough in my mind, institutions in our system today that should have, that should address these anomalies. But we must admit that there is, that we see the failure of the system to effectively prevent corruption. The ombudsman under the constitution has the mandate to punish and prevent these anomalies. This is a constitutional power. But today, we need this body being proposed by the Senate President in his bill because of the unrest that we feel in our midst. And we need to restore the faith of our people in our democratic system of government. My submission, Mr. Chairman, is that we, this commission should not be a new body that will be perpetually funded and existed. We have enough institutions or democracy. In my view, we have to strengthen them. But in the meantime, let us have this ad hoc body in order to restore the faith of our people in our justice system and modify the people, make them believe that still, that democracy is still the best system for our governance. We therefore urge the chairman and the committee to immediately report to plenary the bill of the Senate President after this committee hearing and that it be calendar for debates in the Senate before the Senate tackles the national budget. We urge the president, and I join the call of the chairman, to certify the same as urgent. Mr. President, there are precedents to the creation of the ICI. There are precedents. Recall, the most famous, of course, is the Agrava Commission, which was formed in 1986. And you have the Davidi Commission, the Feliciano Commission. All of this, Mr. President, were fact-finding bodies. The same as what is envisioned in Senate Bill 1252 because it is consistent with the constitution that this body be given, be created to be given fact-finding powers. And all of these bodies before, whose existence were challenged in the court, were all sustained by constitutional, except for the truth commission. And the truth commission was decreed by the Supreme Court as unconstitutional because of the equal protection clause when the EO itself said that it shall cover only investigations of anomalies of the past administration. That was considered as violating of the equal protection clause. I have other comments on the other parts of the bill, Mr. Chairman, that I will end this opening statement with, again, with an acknowledgement of my appreciation to the committee for setting this early. We reiterate our call that this be given top priority by the Senate leadership. And once more, allow me to express, I think, I would echo the appreciation of our people on the effort of the Senate President to file this bill. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Senate President Delon. Would members of the ICC, would the ICI, would you have an opening, or does former Chief Justice Puno have an opening statement? You have the floor, sir.
Senate President, I like to think that your preliminary statements eloquently express the necessity for the filing of this bill and more importantly, its enactment without any unnecessary delay. They also adequately express the anger of our people on the corruption being unearthed, especially on the flood control projects. Likewise, your statements perfectly echo the unanimous opinion of all the sectors of our society. The upper class, the middle class, the poor class, the academe, the civic organization, the churches on the imperative need for the passage of this bill. And so, in the interest of time and to avoid redundancy, I will not make any further prologue or preliminary statements. But I am ready, Your Honors, to give my comments on the different provisions of Senate Bill 1215. Thank you, Your Honors.
Thank you, Chief Justice Puno. Justice Andres Reyes, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, I'd like to thank Senator Pagalinan Animo and Senate President Vicente Soto for this invitation. We thank you because our loss, our creation needs more powers, more refinement. Again, I will just echo what you have said earlier that this thing is outrageous and makes me cry that how can these people get away with 500 billion pesos? It's our inspiration to work hard. We are only 39 days old. ICI is only 39 days old. For the last 21 days, we only had three lawyers. And now we have some volunteers from the PAO and from the other agencies. But we will try our best to be able to full-blown investigation of all this fraud. We don't have the facility and we don't have the rules of procedure. But we will already shorten the procedure in spite of no rules allowing us. We will now go on livestream next week once we get to be able to have the technical capability with us already. So again, I repeat, we'll be doing livestream next week. And thank you, Po.
Thank you, Justice Reyes. And that is welcome news that the ICI will do live streaming of its proceedings. People would like to know the facts of these cases and would like to be updated as to the developments and the progress of the investigation. And a live streaming of the proceedings will definitely address this concern of the public. Thank you very much. Secretary Babe Singson, do you have an opening statement? Please go ahead. You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Senator Pagalinan. And good afternoon to Senate President Tito Soto. Sir, Your Honor, after being in DPWAs for six years, full six years, I could not believe what I was hearing in terms of the magnitude of the corruption. And I tried to analyze, where did the system fail? It looked like it was all over. This is what we've learned so far. And Senate President Vicente Soto for this invitation. We thank you because, uh, our loss, our creation needs more powers, more refinement. Again, I will just echo what you have said earlier, that this thing is outrageous. And makes me cry that. How can these people get away with five hundred billion pesos? It's, uh, it's our inspiration to work hard. We are only thirty-nine days old. ICI is only thirty-nine days old. For the last twenty-one days, we only had three lawyers. And now, now we have some volunteers from the PAO and from the other agencies. But we will try our best to be able to. Full-blown investigation of all this fraud. We don't have the facility and we don't have the rules of procedure. But, but we will already shorten the procedure. Uh, in spite of no, no rules allowing us, we will now go on live stream next week. Uh, once we get to be able to have the technical capability with us already. So again, I repeat, we'll be doing live stream next week. And thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Justice Reyes, and that is welcome news, uh, that the ICI will do live streaming of its proceedings. Uh, people would like to know, uh, the, the, uh, the facts of this, of these cases. And would like to be updated as to the developments and the progress of the investigation. And a live streaming of the proceedings will definitely address, uh, this, uh, this concern of the public. Thank you very much. Uh, Secretary Bebsingzon, do you have a opening statement? Please go ahead. You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangilinan, and good afternoon to Senate President Tito Soto. Uh, sir, your honor. After being in DPWH for six years, full six years. I could not believe what I was hearing in terms of the magnitude of the corruption. And, uh, I tried to analyze, where did the system fail? It looked like it was all over. This is what we've learned so far after. With cold witnesses, I think a total of forty-plus have been invited. Including eight senators, four congressmen, four secretaries, and several other personalities. Uh, but recognizing that the. Procedure, the legal process that we have to follow is so tedious. Bago po may makulong ang habaho ng proseso. As compared, you may want to consider, as compared to the two gold standards of anti-corruption. Which is the ICAC of Hong Kong and the CPIB of Singapore. They have much more powers than all three of these agencies that we have combined. Now, as a result of the difficulty and because of the very strong clamor. Of our people, because of the massive corruption all over the place. Uh, under the leadership of Chairman Reyes, we invited. A total of twenty government agencies. To find out from them, what are their administrative powers? That we can immediately utilize in collaboration with these agencies. Marami po pala yan. So we hope, we hope that the committee can consider some of these provisions. For example, under the Philippine Competition Commission, you have anti-. Uh, competition provisions or big, big rigging, rigging of bids. That will penalize for the first instance immediately one hundred million. Second incident, one hundred five, one hundred ten, all the way to two hundred fifty million pesos per incident. We have also identified in other agencies like customs, like CAAP. But more telling is an old executive order. Uh, specifically nine one five, one, nine one three. Senator President, nine one three is the. You might want to pick up some of those provisions in EO nine one three. That gives immediate whole departure order, immediate seizure of assets. Marami palayon na pwedeng gamitin. So if it is already there. It is just a matter of putting all of them under your proposed bill, Mister Senator. So with that, uh, I will, I will end my opening statement. Because I can discuss further details in terms of where, how, how much, and so on. But I will leave it up to the senate.
Thank you, Secretary Bebs. Just to clarify, EO nine one three is a DTI executive order?
It's a presidential executive order empowering the then Minister of Trade.
Okay, okay, DTI. Thank you, thank you. Uh, from the Makati Business Club, Apa Ongpin, the executive director, please, you have the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you. Oops. Um, I'll try to keep it as brief as possible. One, uh, we believe that all the ICI sessions should be public. But that the ICI itself should have, um, the whatever. Authority to declare confidential sessions with no streaming or broadcast. Okay, because, you know, speaking as a former journalist, this can very easily turn into a circus. I mean, it already has in some cases, okay? And, um, you know, the accused are, uh, you know, they're entitled to due process. And, um, you know, we, we cannot turn this into a public shaming, uh, exercise. We want to emphasize that the ICI, as the senate president has already pointed out. Should have additional expanded powers. It should be judicial, investigated, investigative. Um, and even confiscatory, uh, you know, like, uh, the PCGG used to have. Uh, so power of subpoena, power to declare in contempt. And which, which includes arrest and hold orders after due process, okay? Um, the, uh. The commission, whatever we call it, should have the authority to file cases. Without going through the ombudsman, the DOJ, the attorney general. We believe it should be that powerful. Um, we propose that the commission be expanded. Far beyond its current, I mean, you know, there, there, there's twenty of these guys right now. It needs to be maybe ten times the size just to deal with the huge volume of cases. Let alone the huge volume of money involved, no? Um, and it should be expanded beyond infrastructure. What we're seeing now, as I think Professor Abante will tell you, is that. These guys, the same guys in Congress and, you know, they're worming their way in now to the Ayuda, into the social welfare programs. Diba? That's, that's how, how they're trying to take the money. It's beyond infrastructure and, you know, as we've always said. We want eyes on Bureau of Customs and, um, Bureau of Internal Revenue. Let's not pretend that there's no corruption there. Um, the, uh. The ICI or the, the group should have fiscal autonomy and security of tenure. I mean, in order to be really independent, okay? Uh, we, we believe that, uh, you know, uh, and in fact. Future appointments need to be approved by a wider group than just the president at this point. It's just the palace who's appointing people to this thing, no? And, um, finally, um, we feel that, uh. Like Secretary Singson has said, we should look to the examples of Hong Kong and Singapore. Um, and, and study the charters of those organizations. Because although they have slightly different legal systems. Um, you know, those organizations have been very, very effective, uh, obviously. In comparison to our own, uh, past experience.
Thank you very much, Apa Ongpin of the Makati Business Club. We now have People's Budget Coalition. Uh. Professor Kenneth Abante, go ahead. You have the floor. Where do you teach, Professor?
Uh, I teach at the Kennedy School, uh, the summers, Mister, Mister Chair.
Oh, okay. My school. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mister Chair, Senate President Soto, honorable members of the committee. We are the People's Budget Coalition. Kami po ay grupo ng more than forty people's organizations and civil society organizations. Pushing for a transparent, participatory, and accountable budget process. Uh, inaral po namin, uh, yung, uh, insertions and yung budget process, uh, budget documents over the past twenty years. Allow us to share inputs po on what we've found. Uh, I think going directly to the subject of today's hearing. We in the People's Budget Coalition support the urgent passage of the Independent People's Commission Bill. Empowering it with the powers of contempt. Mandating that hearings be open by default unless there are critical meetings that need to be kept confidential. That it be given fiscal autonomy. Uh, and that it proactively disclose the tracking of cases pending before the judiciary related to cases of corruption. Uh, I was listening to Representative Chell Jockno's interview, uh, yesterday. Uh, about some cases pending before the Sandigan Bayan, uh, aging forty years, Mister Chair. Uh, we think these are critical to be resolved. Uh, today is the first anniversary of severe tropical storm Christine. I am a typhoon survivor and disaster response volunteer. That unfortunately, uh, we are victims of this massive corruption scandal. Unfortunately, and the tragic truth, Mister Chair, is that we have lost trust in the integrity of our budget procurement and justice systems. We organized rescue relief medical missions in communities po na dalawang linggo baha sa Bicol region. Uh, there were teachers who needed to do GCAS drives in order for their students to go back to school. Uh, because all their learning kits and even their houses were destroyed by this massive typhoon. Rainfall worse than Undoy, uh, Mister Chair and Senate President Soto. That is why, uh, our hearts break. Uh, whenever we heard the news that, uh, the eighteen major river basin master plans. The major river basin master plans would have just cost seven hundred to eight hundred billion pesos. Pero po yung ginastos na, uh, sa flood control over the past ten years ay around one point seven trillion. Meaning, kung naayos po pala natin yung sistema ng pagplano, sana. Kami sa Bicol ay hindi binaha ng ganun kalala. Sana po ay ang mga teachers ay hindi nawalan ng mga bahay. Sana po ay hindi sana namatayan at nagkaroon ng serious injury yung aming mga kapwa, uh, Bicolano. So this independent commissions, uh, People's Commission Bill is to us. An important cry for help and justice. It is one of the demands of more than three hundred twenty organizations and individuals. Including Cardinal Amba David and our bishops, calling for systemic reform after the flood control scandal. We will give you a copy of this statement, uh, Mister Chair, for the record. And calling for the elimination of pork patronage and opaque budgets in the house version of the budget. At least two hundred fifty-six billion pesos still in the house version of the budget, uh, Mister Chair. The people are angry. The people want justice. Uh, and one of the reasons why we're discussing, uh, the Independent People's Commission Bill. Is because in our discussions, we lost trust in the previous ombudsman. Uh, that was not able to file cases aggressively for those with highest crimes. Uh, we consider our justice system to have two tiers, one for the rich and one for the poor. Nauna pa pong makulong ang mga nagprotesta laban sa kitiwalian, kaysa sa mga tiwali. And lastly, Mister Chair, we wanted to give the commission and the committee a sense of proportion. Uh, about the, uh, current, uh, flood control scandal. It is only a drop in the bucket, uh, Mister Chair. Uh, the Sumbong sa Pangulo website has around five hundred forty-seven billion pesos worth of flood control, uh, projects. Over the same time period, twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-five, around one point two trillion pesos po. Yung actual na flood control budget. So we have to ask, what happened to the rest of the half? Have these been completed? We need to know, and the people deserve to know. And then, uh, finally, uh, Mister Chair, with regard to the insertions. It's actually only, flood control is actually only the minimal, uh, minimal insertions, uh, to the budget. Kahit na mukhang malaki, uh, the real insertions over the past years where there is data from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-five. Eight hundred twenty-eight billion pesos po yung may congressional insertions to the convergence and special support program. To the local program, two hundred thirty-seven billion. To the asset preservation program, around a hundred sixty-three billion. And yung flood management program po only around net of two twenty, twenty-two point eight billion pesos. So we're only seeing, you know, a miniscule, uh, amount dito po sa flood control, uh, budget. And we hope that the Independent People's Commission can also look into, uh, these even more massive, uh, insertions that happen. Uh, we are happy to also share our findings about each of the reforms. To the budget preparation, to the budget legislation, uh, execution and accountability stage that we saw vulnerabilities of. Uh, but I will pause my statement, uh, for now, Mister Chair, Senate President Soto. Magandang hapan po sa ating lahat.
Uh, thank you very much, Professor Abante. Uh, we would like to know, the chairperson would like to know if, uh. Any of our government entities, uh, present have opening statements? Or statements or position papers on the, on the subject matter? Or we will just ask you, or, uh, the CHR, uh, Chairperson Pal Palatok, go ahead.
Thank you, Mister President, Mister Chair, your honors. Uh, I, I have no prepared opening statement, your honor, but I would like to take this opportunity to make, um, a statement in relation to the subject matter. Um, and, uh, and in this connection, I would like to quote, um, one of the statements of the UN High Commissioner on Human Rights. Uh, who stated that corruption has a destructive effect on state institutions. And on the capacity of states to respect, protect, and fulfill human rights. Particularly of those persons and group in situations of vulnerability and marginalization. Corruption, um, cripples budgets that should provide healthcare, housing, education, and other essential services. And it undermines, um, the state's ability to meet, um, its minimum core obligations. And pre-existing legal obligations. To maximize all available resources to respect, protect, and fulfill economic, social, and cultural rights. As well as the government's commitment to the sustainable development, development goals. And, um, in this connection, your honor, um, I would like to highlight that due to this corruption, um. It exacerbates, um, existing discrimination and disproportionate impact. It creates disproportionate impact on women, children, migrants, persons with disability, and persons living in poverty among other individuals. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Chairperson Pal Palatok. Um, yes, uh, Asek Villar of the DPWH.
Uh, good afternoon, your honors. Just a brief statement from the DPWH. Uh, we are the new team, um, uh, supporting the Secretary Vince Dezon in his drive for. You know, call for transparency and accountability. We just want to express, your honors, that, um, we have your, we have, you have our full support. As the new team for the passage of this Senate Bill one two one five. Because this measure will aid in the government's anti-corruption efforts as well as the DPWH, um, anti-corruption efforts. And this is to echo also, uh, our Secretary Vince Dezon's call na managot ang dapat managot. So we ensure and we, uh, undertake, your honor, that whatever documents or reports that the committee. Will request from the DPWH, everything will be made available. Thank you.
Thank you, Assistant Secretary Villar. Um, we now, yes, the DBM, uh, Attorney Baraan, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mister Chair, uh, Senate President, and to all the, all the persons present here today. We would like to manifest a few points, Mister Chair, and to respond po dun sa mga initial comments po of our guests. First of all po, we fully support the intention of the bill. And since may independent commission na po currently, we would like to note lang po na. Ensure lang po na walang duplication po ng mga iti-take-up po nilang mga cases kaya. Baka maclarify lang po sa bill na ensure na wala pong duplication. If the intention is separate, separate entities po sila. And then, and kung, kung ad hoc din po yung intention nitong commission po. We would like to note, baka pwede rin pong lagyan ng sunset clause katulad po dun sa EO ninety-four. And we note po na, baka gusto rin pong lagyan ng sekretariat po yung itong commission na ito katulad po dun sa EO ninety-four. As to the proposal po to have fiscal autonomy. Uh, we respectfully request for reconsideration po. Kasi this might be a precedent po na magclamor for yung other proposals for fiscal autonomy. And to note currently po, nasa constitution lang po yung may fiscal autonomy and limited fiscal autonomy. So that is all, Mister Chair. Thank you, Paul.
Maybe, uh, ju- just a quick comment there. Um, we consider this corruption case, these corruption cases as unprecedented. And therefore, perhaps unprecedented fiscal autonomy should be made available. Um, are there other? Are there other... Okay, with that, the Senate President wishes to raise a few questions. Go ahead, Senate President.
Well, before you continue with your hearing, Mr. Chairman, may I just throw a question? Actually, it's from left field. Either former Secretary Babe Shing Sun or the DPWH representative, I just want to know what is there in the DPWH Quezon City office that was burning a few hours ago? Alam mo ang laman dun?
If I'm not mistaken, this might be part of the Region 4A office. Kasi kung yun yun nasa kamuning area, I'm not sure. But I know there are one or two offices along Edsa in that area, Quezon City, 4A. So I hope it is not our zone.
Well, I just thought that the media would like to be, would be interested to find out. Ms., the Asec of DPWH?
Asec Villar?
Yes, your honor. This is actually Region 4B, the regional office 4B of the DPWH.
4B?
Yes, your honor.
Lindoro?
Eto po 'yung ano, dito po ang site ng testing materials ng DPWH na mga suppliers like cemento, mga bakal. Dito po tini-test. So we are looking into it already. Pero eto po 'yung testing site.
Testing site? Walang mga dokumento dun?
Of course, meron po, your honor.
So, testing site with the permission of the Senate President, testing site and the office of the Regional DPWH Region 4B? Okay, okay. So 'yung mga dokumento ng Regional Office of the DPWH Region 4B is housed in that office?
Well, a number, but, but, but most of it naman po nasa database na ng central.
Okay, yes.
Sir, GMA News has reported that the fire specifically affected the Bureau of Research Standards building. That's, that's what they said, Bureau of Research Standards building.
Testing.
Testing po, your honor.
Yes, Justice Andres Reyes.
With due respect to that office, as per testimony of witness Bryce Hernandez, there is one percent for the testing office of the DPWH. Where voucher is one percent. Thank you.
So the one percent documentation is gone? Okay, thank you. Thank you for the information. I understand, Senate President Rilon, you were suggesting, considering that this is only three pages, that you'd like to go through. Go ahead.
Yes, in order to maximize our time, Mr. Chairman, if I may, first, I'm listening to our resource persons. First, we must emphasize that this is a fact-finding body that we are trying to form. The power is to investigate, not to adjudicate. It cannot conduct preliminary investigation, which is the role of the prosecution service. And it cannot much less adjudicate, which is a judicial function. So it is limited correctly to only investigation. Having said that, under our system and our constitution, the primary jurisdiction of, for investigation of anomalies is the ombudsman. The ombudsman is the primary body. But that does not prevent us from putting, from creating this commission. But having said that, we must strengthen our institutions of democracy that would exact accountability rather than keep on adding bodies. That is why I am in favor of this, in favor of the proposed commission. But it must be an ad hoc, it must have a sunset clause rather than perpetually having a duplication of functions. We recognize the constitution, the ombudsman has the primary authority. We strengthen the ombudsman. For example, I read in the media that the ombudsman has asked those who applied earlier to apply again, about two hundred or so vacancies. So we must strengthen this because otherwise the tendency, and I've been in this body before, the tendency of our, of our structure is to keep on adding people so that you create a huge bureaucracy. Every problem that pops up, we solve it by creating an office. In this particular case, I have, I am endorsing the commission creation because of the situation that we are in. But we should not forget the fact that our primary objective should be to strengthen our institutions of democracy that could demand accountability. And in this particular case, the ombudsman. But we have to have this ICI, or however we call it, because of the need of the times. But as I said, we must remember that we should be limited to fact-finding. In fact, that's recognized in the bill of the Senate President. It's only fact-finding and only limited to infrastructure projects. In other words, if another farmally case would come around, it is not in the purview of this body. Because as the Senate President himself said in his measure, it is limited to infrastructure projects, past and present, but limited to investigation. In other words, it is a fact-finding body. And it will now recommend to the ombudsman or to the prosecutor, the prosecution of cases. But commenting on certain...
On the issue of the sunset provision, what timeline are you looking at?
My, my, just off the top of my head, subject to further discussion, the term of the present administration, June thirty...
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-twenty-eight. But, you know, it's just something that we make as a reference. I have no problems with, my issue is it must have a sunset provision so that we will not have duplications. But to address the need for inadequacies in the system, we should strengthen the ombudsman, we strengthen the COA by adequate funding. That's my submission, Mr. Chairman. Rather than creating a permanent body which will again investigate or do work or do the functions of the ombudsman. That's my submission.
Yes, Chief Justice Puno, go ahead.
Are you done?
Well, there are others, but I can't.
You may interject, Chief Justice Puno, in relation to the points earlier.
I would like to, former Senate President Rilon to continue. And then I'll also have my time to comment on the specific provisions of the Senate Bill.
Yes.
So, okay, just on the, going back, on the remedies or, sorry, on the powers which one of our resource person mentioned, the issuance of an HDO, I would not agree that we place this in the hands of an administrative body. It must be a judicial determination because it involves the rights of individuals to travel, the right to abode. If you, if you, an HDO is a very powerful power of government and to allow, it must be a judicial finding. Other administrative remedies, we can, we would endorse depending on...
Perhaps the minimum would be a lookout order.
Lookout order, yeah. Now, the controversial issue, Mr. Chairman, is the power to hold a person being investigated in contempt. We should be very careful here because of the right against self-incrimination. Remember that the persons being called to the hearing of this, of the ICI face potential criminal liabilities. If the ICI or the body is empowered to recommend the prosecution of people. And having said that, if one invokes his right against self-incrimination, we cannot order the detention of that person until he cooperates. The example in the Senate or in the House cannot be cited because the objective of an investigation in the Senate and the House is in aid of legislation. Now, on the other hand, the ICI or this independent commission can recommend the prosecution. And therefore, we cannot, I have very serious reservations about granting them the power of contempt. We have, okay, on, I think we should...
On that, on that point, Senate President Rilon, what you're saying is the remedy perhaps of this body, of this proposed body would be to go to court?
Yes.
And, and seek the contempt order from the court?
Yes, yes.
And maybe, maybe the Court of Appeals so that it's...
Whatever, but it cannot be, the, no, and, and the principle, whether it's in the regular court or in the, or this body, where the contempt would require the answering of questions which can incriminate, whether it's in this body or in the Court of Law, to, in my mind, you know, the right against self-incrimination.
For example, well, we do have this case with the Disquias.
Yes.
They now refuse to cooperate with the ICI. What is the remedy of the ICI? Or what should be?
The remedy of the ICI, the remedy of the ICI is to assess what they have gathered as evidence, recommend to the, to the ombudsman whatever action they find necessary. And the lookout of the Disquias is that the matter will be decided without the evidence that is presented. But that is how the system works because another system could, could have more dangers. Now, the matter of, it is also mentioned by the private, by, by the businessman that somebody, some private group must approve the appointment of the president. I don't think that's possible because the power of the president to appoint is constitutional. Is the appointing authority is elected by the people. For a private group to be given the power to pass upon this appointments regardless of how well-beinging they are, I don't think that can stand constitutional scrutiny, Mr. Chair.
So they can recommend?
They can limit, for example, there is nothing wrong with such, with recommendation. And even, we can even legislate as proposed by Senator Soto that the nominations of, say, of a retired justice must be passed upon by, it can be, it can be exercised by some group, integrated bar, can recommend, the president's power to appoint can be limited by that, that his authority can be exercised only on the, on the nominated, on the nominees. Now, we have done that, Mr. President, in existing laws. I myself wrote that in the Charter of the Professional Regulatory Commission so that only those recommended by the professional body can be appointed as a member of the boards. So I mean, we have done that.
Then the, in our case, in my case, the Coconut Levy Trust Fund.
Yes, the Coconut Levy Trust Fund, representative of the farmers must be nominated by the farmers' group. Now, now, you know, I can understand the impatience of our people. But we must remember that we have certain safeguards in the constitution that cannot be disregarded. So that the, I do not miss, the, whatever models we use, the first model that we look at is our constitution. And let us not be carried by the desire to do away with certain procedures for the sake of, of what we see today. At this point, I yield the floor to my colleagues.
Thank you, Senate President Rilon. We have Chief Justice Puno, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May I now express my thoughts on the various provisions of Senate Bill number twelve fifteen? First, the primary purpose of Senate Bill number twelve fifteen is to create an independent People's Commission. The stress is on the word independent. The question is, how can we more or less determine that the commission sought to be established by Senate Bill number twelve fifteen is independent? It is respectfully submitted, your honors, that we have to look at the structure of the proposed People's Commission from different dimensions to determine its independence in accord with the known and recognized template used by the international community. What are these different dimensions to determine the independence of this People's Commission? First, it's a legal autonomy or independence. And we can perceive this from the different provisions of Senate Bill number twelve fifteen. Second, it's a budgetary or financial autonomy. Third, it's operational independence. And fourth, it's immunity and security against undue influence or retaliation. So proceeding from these different dimensions or the template provided by the international community, I respectfully submit the following observations. One on the composition of the commission. I note that the chairman of the commission will be a retired justice from the Supreme Court. But I note that the nomination will come from the integrated bar. I like to inform your honors that the retired justices have their own organization. And perhaps the nomination should come from these retired justices. In the same way that this has been, this is the proposal with respect to the other members of the commission. There are certain questions on the matter, your honors. Are the members of the commission to be considered government officials? subject to all its uh, rules and regulations such as the filing of uh, salad, full-time services, divestment of assets and the other prohibitions? Who determines uh, their compensation and other allowances? And is there any provision on uh, how they can be removed from office? We may also uh, want to rethink the provision allowing uh, the reappointment of uh, members of uh, the uh, commission. And now this goes to the uh, conflicting thoughts on whether this should be an ad hoc body or a body with a fixed term. And all that the question about uh, the need for a sunset provision. Number two on the budgetary independence. It is the wording of Section Eight on appropriation of the commission. Or is the wording on appropriation sufficient to guarantee that the commission's needed budget will be provided to ensure the uh, success of each uh, operation? Again, uh, this will go to the uh, the different thoughts on uh, the kind, whether there's a need for fiscal autonomy on the part of uh, this uh, commission? Or uh, not the traditional fiscal autonomy that we grant, let us say, to the Supreme Court, but a kind that is a hybrid in order uh, to satisfy the uh, uh, this uh, need for uh, budgetary independence? Number three, on its operational uh, independence. We just heard from uh, uh, the chairman of I P I that uh, the commission has only three lawyers.
But may volunteers now.
Yes. And uh, Section Nine of the bill provides that the organizational structure and stopping pattern of the commission shall be subject to the approval of a D B M and consistent with the civil service laws, rules and regulations. Since the commission uh, should be independent, will not the approval of uh, the D B M and strict application of civil service laws unduly restrict the operational independence of the commission? Or should we look for a uh, a sort of a middle ground considering the uh, the need for powers of this independent commission? Fourth, on the immunity and security of the members of the commission. I note that uh, there is nothing in the Senate Bill that protects the members of the commission from harassment suits, especially after their uh, term of office expires. It is a respectfully suggested that uh, this bill should provide some kind of uh, immunity to the members of uh, the uh, commission. I have other observations and suggestions on the power of the commission. And uh, this has been stressed by uh, Senator Rilon. The power is only to investigate. After a investigation, the commission is to go to the ombudsman or to the Department of Justice and recommend the filing of uh, the proper charges. And the cases to undergo the usual preliminary investigation in the D O J or the ombudsman. And it is the latter offices that actually will determine whether cases will be filed before our appropriate courts. The process, as a stress here, will be long. And the D O J or the ombudsman may even set aside the findings and recommendations of the commission. And so, in effect, after giving the commission an independent status, its power is only to investigate. It is a respectfully suggested that uh, the bill should not only give the commission the power to investigate, but also the power to file the appropriate charges and the power to prosecute them. We hail the uh, model of Singapore, of Hong Kong. This, this is precisely the, the point why those bodies are so effective. They have the power to, to prosecute, not just to investigate, not just to be glorified the researchers. For this purpose, the commission cannot develop its own prosecutors or deputize some prosecutors from the D O J, from the ombudsman, from the Office of the Solicitor General, from the power to assist in the prosecution of the cases. It is also respectfully suggested that there should be a provision prohibiting lower courts, except the Supreme Court, from issuing T R Os against the investigations being conducted by the commission. It is also suggested that the extent of the subpoena powers of the commission should be clarified. Can the commission subpoena bank records, tax returns, salons, data from the Amla? And uh, especially if they belong to such personalities as the president, the members of Congress, or the justices of uh, the Supreme Court and other uh, independent bodies. There is also the uh-
What would you recommend in that regard, uh, Chief Justice Puno?
Again, uh, extraordinary times require extraordinary remedies. As soon as these uh, extraordinary times uh, will be gone, when normalcy will again uh, prevail, it is easy for uh, for Congress to get back all uh, these uh, powers.
Thank you, thank you.
And uh, there was also talk about uh, giving uh, the commission uh, hold order uh, power. Uh, it's called the departure uh, uh, power. Actually, it is now, it's only the court that can issue uh, hold the departure uh, order. But uh, will we be violating the constitution if we give this power to the uh, commission? I think we will be violating the constitution if we deny the judiciary of this power. Because essentially, this is judicial power. But the constitution does not prescribe the giving of this uh, power to another body in view of uh, the extraordinary times that uh, that uh, face, faces. I have heard the proposed amendments suggested by the Senate uh, uh, president and I uh, conquer in uh, all of them. Anyway, uh, your honors, thank you for your invitation to share my thoughts on uh, Senate Bill twelve fifteen, a piece of legislation which the, the country needs to pass without unnecessary delay in view of the crisis of corruption threatening our harmony as a people and the future of democracy in our country. Thank you, your honors.
Just a quick question, Chief Justice Puno. Um, based on your own uh, inputs, uh, you therefore, it is your position that the current I C I uh, has inadequate uh, powers to be able to address um, the largest corruption scandal ever in the country's history?
Yes, your honor, and uh, uh, I, I like to think that that opinion uh, is, is shared by uh, by uh, all uh, the people uh, in our uh, country, especially the academy, the professors of constitutional law. And I like to think that this is considered even by the present uh, uh, I P I.
Um, maybe one quick question. Uh, it may take some time, I hope not, uh, for this to be finally passed, uh, uh, will that not therefore become a, a added delay uh, to our desire to have uh, this resolved immediately? Number one. And number two, assuming it does pass uh, at some point, uh, then there has to be a transition between the I C I and their work towards, of course, the, the, the new body uh, that is to be created?
Uh, yes, uh, your honor, but uh, the president uh, has uh, made this statement two or three days ago that he supports the creation of this uh, independent uh, commission. That he realizes uh, the inadequacies of the power of the commission and therefore, uh, he, he, in all force, support the creation of this independent uh, commission. If, if that is his position, he can always certify this bill as urgent. And I've seen also the counterpart bill in uh, in the House of Representatives. Uh, there, there are very few uh, provisions that uh, are opposed to each other. And so it will be very easy for both houses to agree on a final version of the bill.
Yes, uh-
Chairman, just one question, uh, for my enlightenment. In your um, position on the powers that we should give I P C, you know, or the Independent People's Commission, um, you said prosecution and that um, authorize something to the effect that they may be able to authorize the ombudsman or the, the, or deputize the Department of Justice, you know? Uh, do you think it would be, uh, legal or still independence will be, uh, still in the, in the, in the commission if you include a representative from the D O J or a represent, or, and a representative from the ombudsman in the commission itself?
No, no, your honor, because uh, these are uh, complimentary measures. The, the purpose of both, let us say, the ombudsman law and the purpose of this Senate bill run parallel to each other. They con, they do not contradict each other. The creation of this uh, independent commission will only strengthen the country's fight against uh, against uh, corruption. So the removal, demolition of the powers of the ombudsman, the powers of uh, the D O J because they will be complimentary.
Thank you, sir. Senate President Rilon, you may wish to answer the question of-
I cast the dissenting vote with all due respect. You know, first, when you deputize a fiscal or a member of the ombudsman's office as part of the commission, the power there is moved to the commission, uh, because he becomes, that ombudsman becomes, or that representative becomes part of the commission. We have the ombudsman who has power of jurisdiction. You cannot move the power of the ombudsman to prosecute to another body not constitutional unless, unless we amend our constitution. And therefore, under the present set, it is my respectful submission with all due respect to the learned justice that we cannot transfer indirectly the power of the ombudsman to the commission by uh, allowing members of the ombudsman's office to be deputized or to be brought as part of the office of this commission because the authority to prosecute is transferred in effect to, indirectly to the chairman of the commission now. Um, so
what if the ombudsman consents?
No, the consent is, the consent is immaterial.
Is uh, contrary to the constitution.
Yes, that's our position. It is contrary to our constitution. We cannot grant another entity the power to prosecute in courts or somewhere else, the, the, the malfeasance committed. Uh, that has never been in power in any of the uh, fact-finding commissions that we have created. The Feliciano Commission, the Davide Commission, they were never given that power to prosecute. And if you remember, uh, Mr., Mr. President, there was a proposal here in the Senate to deput, to allow private prosecutors in ombudsman cases. As a matter of policy, the Senate refused to grant that kind of uh, uh, privilege because you prosecute your public officials and you cannot allow private prosecutors. That's, the, the, that is a policy issue which the Senate rejected as uh, as uh, correct. So, and that's, that's why we have reservations about uh, transferring the power to the ombudsman to another body.
Chief Justice Puno?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, we, we are not usurping the uh, powers of uh, the ombudsman. There are, there are powers as uh, as uh, defined in the constitution and the laws will be there. But uh, we are uh, giving prosecutorial powers to this uh, independent uh, commission to complement the uh, powers of uh, the ombudsman. Now, this uh, this matter of uh, deputizing, it does not violate any law, for instance, the Office of the, of the Solicitor General. The Office of the Solicitor General, since time immemorial, has deputized prosecutors from the Department of Justice to handle cases in the lower courts. And nobody has challenged the legality of that uh, deputization.
Well, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, the deputization of the Solicitor General by the Department of Justice Secretary is because they both belong to the Department of Justice. And this, only later it evolved that there is some degree of independence on the part of the O S G. But the O S G is essentially part of the Justice Department. A problema ko po, pang di na, if you allow deputization, then you transfer the power of supervision over that, uh, that prosecutor from the ombudsman to the I C, to the I C, which to me is constitutionally doubtful with all due respect to Chief Justice Ray.
Yes, we, we may have to study this, but yes, uh, Chief Justice, go ahead.
Yes, uh- Yes, but again, the emphasis is that these are complementary measures. The ombudsman, the power of the ombudsman to investigate cases, prosecute cases as defined by law will still be preserved. But under the present situation, there will be new cases that will be filed before the independent commission. And these cases will not interfere with the cases that are being filed in the ombudsman. So there will be no, no, no conflict of powers with respect to the cases that will be handled, both by the commission and by, by the ombudsman's action. They will be complementary.
Yes, just for the record and for the information of Senators Dilon and Chief Justice Puno, the Anti-Agriculture Economic Sabotage Council, which was a creation of Congress last year, September 2024, a Section 17 special term of prosecutors to assist the council, the Anti-Agriculture Economic Sabotage Council, in the expeditious prosecution of criminal cases covered under this act. The DOJ Secretary of the DOJ is hereby mandated to constitute a special team of prosecutors all over the country, which shall have the following powers and duties among others: evaluate evidence gathered and submitted by the enforcement group of the council, act on criminal complaints directly filed by persons under Section 21, initiate and conduct preliminary investigations. So in this particular measure, which is now law, it is the DOJ that is mandated to create. Uh, so perhaps we can marry the two, the two, I mean, proposals wherein it's the ombudsman that will create a special team or the DOJ will create a special team of prosecutors to address the issue or the cases recommended for filing by the IC, by the commission. Yes.
In fact, sir, that is one of the things that we felt would be important. With the point of Senator Dilon is very well taken. We don't want to add layers of bureaucracy to this thing. We feel the business community, I think I speak for the business community, feels that the ombudsman itself needs to be strengthened in order to handle this volume of cases. It's, it's simple math, no? I mean, the, the volume of cases is, is in this affair alone, the flood control or whatever called infrastructure alone is so enormous that if you had to hand all of these things to the ombudsman as it exists today, they would come to a standstill. The throughput would be terrible, you know? So we believe that they need to be strengthened as well. And I think a practical solution can be found.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, go ahead, Senator President Dilon. Speak before the.
Yeah. Okay. One of the suggested provisions I have in mind is to direct by law the Supreme Court to vacate the docket of one of the Sandigan Bayan branches and refer all the cases coming from the commission to that particular branch so that the trial can be done every day and finish it within, within the shortest period of time. Because that's one of our problems today. The delay in the resolution of the cases erodes the confidence of our people in our justice system. That is why I was just consulting with, if we, the Supreme Court can vacate, can, can, can vacate the, the docket, designate one division to handle all of these cases, it can go a long way.
Yes, and, and the delay has led to dismissals, dismissals of cases.
Yeah, yeah.
In fact, the conviction rate, based on the budget, the budget debates, the conviction rate of the Sandigan Bayan is forty seven percent. Um, therefore, for every two cases, one is dismissed. Now, as to how long those cases were resolved is another issue altogether. So, yes.
Very quickly.
Go ahead, Secretary Babes.
Your honor, just for orders of magnitude, just on Ghost Projects alone, four hundred twenty-one potential cases. Nothing else. Just on Ghost Projects, four hundred twenty-one will land either in the ombudsman or in the Sandigan Bayan. How do they handle forty-one cases, four hundred twenty-one cases? Right around the other projects, substandard, Ghost Projects palang, four hundred twenty-one cases.
And one case would probably include anywhere between, what, ten to fifteen accused? Per case?
Because everyone involved in those projects, we will include.
That is the Business Awards Committee, the contractors.
Officers of the DPWA, everyone else.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, Chief Justice Puno?
Yes, on that score, Mr. Chairman, the, this committee or the Senate may consider passing complementary laws on how to fast track the resolution of these cases. You know, creating special divisions in the Sandigan Bayan, maybe one or two, or if there is still a further necessity, creating a new, entirely new subdivisions. And perhaps the committee may also look at, you know, how to, how to fast track the, 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 the resolution of these cases by looking at the evidentiary requirements. Maybe, you know, we can adopt some, some presumptions where after certain acts are proved, then the burden of evidence can be shifted to the respondents. And all these things are not new ideas. They have been adapted in other countries. And this prevented the stale pace resolution of cases. And so as a complementary measure, you may like to pass a special laws on the prosecution of corruption cases.
Thank you. And it, it might become a rider if we include that in this measure. So yes, another bill, yes. Would the DOJ care to comment on the, the the debate as to deputization and or creation of a separate team of prosecutors?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I did not want to engage in a debate between the legal luminaries, Mr. Chair, but just to give the committee some insights. The Department of Justice serves as the principal law agency of the government, and this is under the Administrative Code of nineteen eighty-seven, which is why, and the two functions of the Department of Justice is to serve as the prosecutorial arm of the government. Hence, any deputization of prosecutorial functions is not really allowed except under the rules of criminal procedure where deputization to private prosecutors will be allowed, but they are still under the direct supervision and control of the public prosecutor. Uh, we have also reviewed the provisions of the proposed IPC, Mr. Chair, and we laud the objective behind the passage of the bill to, to address the grave issues of corruption that are being discussed right now in a different public fora. But there may also be possible duplicity of functions here, Mr. Chair. Duplication. As already mentioned, the ombudsman already has investigative powers. Uh, it might raise the question of what if the findings of fact of the commission would differ from that of the ombudsman, which would prevail? Uh, so possibly enhancing already our institutions in place, strengthening them, capacitating them more, giving them more maybe vegetary support manpower support would be ideal. Uh, but if we understand why the committee would push for the passage of this bill and the Department of Justice supports, subject to the submission of our position paper on how to refine other provisions of the bill so that there won't be any legal questions that can be raised later on. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please. And on that note, may we request the committee secretary to likewise send communications to, to the ombudsman for the ombudsman, office of the ombudsman to submit their position paper on this matter. Thank you. Yes, Apa, go ahead.
We just wanted to note from history, the ombudsman has actually only existed since nineteen eighty-eight. Previous to that, a commission was granted, not granted, was given the powers to prosecute and many others. That was the Presidential Commission on Good Government. Okay, so there is a legal precedent, right? But this was, this was in the absence of the ombudsman, right, at the time. But once the ombudsman's office was formed in nineteen eighty-eight, the PCGG continued to have those powers.
Yes, because both the PCGG and the ombudsman are constitutional entities. And therefore, they can, it'll have to be harmonized.
But the PCGG was not under the Department of Justice, as far as I know.
It was not, yes. Yes. Um, okay, we, we, we know that. Uh, I don't have, yes, Justice Reyes, go ahead.
We take note of the confines as mentioned by Secretary Dilon. And we'll be very happy if the powers suggested by the for Chief Justice Puno will be given to us because I have noticed that there are some powers we lack that like bank secrecy law, tax records. You can imagine that the flow of money was by cash. So it's difficult to really trace how the money went about. So we need these financial banking rules to be able to perhaps determine where the money went and who got the money and the amount. And of course, we would also like to have the power to look into text messages of these people because I'm sure that one way or the other, exchange of money was done through a text message between the official and the contractor. Uh, at any rate, we are so happy with the suggestions and of the Chief Justice and we would like it to be adopted as much as possible by this committee.
Thank you, Secretary Babes, and then Chief Justice Puno.
I'd like to also mention the importance of immunity from lawsuit for the members. Kawawa yung member dyan, after they retire, mauubos sila sa lawsuits.
Papetik-petik na lang, diba? Okay, yes, we know that. Go ahead, Chief Justice Puno.
Yes, on the lack of power of IPI. I know the statement now that, you know, the, the, the money that is the subject of these crimes do not anymore go to the, to the banks. They are physically deposited to, if we are to believe it, in apartments, in condominiums, and so on and so forth.
Condominiums, which are also fruits of the illegal wealth, yes.
But that, but that raises the question, Mr. Chairman, on whether you should give this commission the power of search and seizure. That is the question.
Well.
Of course, consistent with the protection given in the Bill of Rights.
Yes, we will note, but that's very interesting. Or maybe that the, the commission can secure the warrants direct from the Court of Appeals or search warrants direct. So if I understand it. Is for the commission to be able to have the power to seize and to. Yes, yes.
Or go to the, the procedure in our terrorism law.
Yes, there is, there are provisions in the anti-terrorism law where the council can.
You go to the Court of Appeals.
Yes.
Just to remind our colleagues, we abhorred the system of ASO during martial law. Let us not put that back into our statute books.
The, the provision is that consistent with all the protections in our constitution, especially the protections in the Bill of Rights. But that is one kind of a solution. You can go to the Court of Appeals. And again, the Supreme Court can designate specific divisions of the Court of Appeals to handle this matter so that the process will be very speedy.
Yes, yes. Thank you, thank you, Chief Justice Puno. Yes, Justice Reyes, go ahead.
Yes, regarding search and seizure, I have been toying with the idea because if an office is engaged in one-ton fraud and we know it's happening there, we should be able to take hold of that entire office. Nobody can be allowed to remove documents and the employees will not have access to that room until we have gone through every record, every USB, everything that's there inside. That way, we can really be able to notice or discover some wrongdoing on the part of that office.
Yes, I remember initially you were expressing a serious concern or grave concern about the burning or destruction of, of public documents.
Yes, as per record now, the burning in Quezon City does not involve flood control projects. But I did have a meeting with the COA and I told him that you have to secure all the records of the COA because as an investigator before with the ombudsman, I know that there's a tendency for the, for the criminals to burn down the office, which happened in the Cebu scandal when they burned down the entire Treasury building in the nineteen eighties.
They, it may not, it may not involve flood control projects, but what about farm-to-market roads? Um, yes, Mr. Rongpin, Apa?
This is actually one of our issues naman that we are trying to work with the DBM about. The issue is transparency, right? A lot of government agencies are resisting digitization because they want to keep everything on paper, right? And when you keep something on paper, it's not transparent. You have to go there to request access to the documents. You can't just find them online, right? So this is a struggle that we're, that we've been having. And the DBM has shown great initiative in this. But, you know, the other guys, DOJ, DVWH, we need these things online, not on paper.
BOC.
BOC, BIR. Yan.
Well, the anti-agricultural sabotage laws mandates that within ninety days of September twenty twenty-four, the single window. uh digital uh digitalization should have been uh operating. So that's uh, that's not the case yet. Uh thank you, thank you, uh Senate President.
Mr. Chairman, yes. Well, just a a short quip. There are some of us who are in love with human intervention. That's why they do not, they disagree with digitalization.
Thank you, thank you. Um yes, uh Professor Rabante, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Me, uh would the committee be open to consulting uh transitional justice and restorative justice experts to also chime into the bill? Uh the reason why I ask for is uh we know that our society's social fabric has now torn. Uh and we need to have a structure in which the people who are convicted uh are able to apologize to all of the families uh that have been affected uh by the corruption. I imagine, uh you know, uh public officials, uh contractors uh who have a face-to-face encounter or depending on what the restorative justice experts say, uh is a good and culturally sensitive way of of mending uh these broken relationships that we have. Uh and this is coming from, you know, uh we can we can think about what happened after uh the end of apartheid uh in South Africa uh and in many other uh, you know, transitional justice uh courts that happened all around the country. So so perhaps uh that that may be our my my first input. I have a second input.
We're willing to get their position papers and take a look at it. Uh so if you can help us, Professor, in that regard, please uh get these groups to uh coordinate with us, submit position papers, and we can review them and see how uh a number of those provisions may be in, may or may not, but may 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 be incorporated in the in the final report and and the measure and the law. Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh my second point is uh around just the massive scale uh of all the cases that need to be filed. And I imagine that even if the commission uh is legislated, uh there is just too much to investigate. Uh so, uh can there be complimentary measures that can help the broader community beyond the commission uh to uh to do fact-finding and investigation? Uh can we make it easier for our community of investigative journalists, for example, to look at uh these potential conflicts of interest? Uh I uh was talking to investigative journalists, uh Casey Valmont and Dwight DeLeon of Rappler, who uh broke the uh story on the probe of uh Representative Zaldico. It cost them thirty thousand pesos to get the Securities and Exchange Commission uh audited financial statements, uh general information sheets uh and articles of incorporation, meaning it's very expensive for investigative journalists to do this work. Uh we hope that uh the uh the honorable Congress uh can can ask SEC to make these documents open and free. There is an beneficial ownership registry uh that uh uh that is supposed to be made public uh under the new Government Procurement Act. Uh it's scheduled according to the Philjepps to be launched on January twenty twenty-six, but perhaps this can be uh accelerated uh given the extraordinary uh cases that we're filing. And then finally, po, uh we are happy to also share that we worked with the Philjepps uh to open up all of the awarded contracts since year two thousand. So they are now published, uh Mr. Chair, uh in the Philjepps website uh and civic tech volunteers have already looked at five million contracts that are published uh now uh in the Philjepps. So uh thank you to the Philjepps and the and the career servants at the Procurement Service DBM uh for for doing this. But these are the types of proactive disclosure that I think Apa was referring to uh a while ago. Uh the problem with the current system in uh Philjepps, we need to uh transition a lot of the agencies into the e-bidding facility. Right now, po, ang Philjepps, yung posting lang po ng opportunities, tapos yung posting ng award. In between, po, a lot of the bidding is still manual. But there's, under the new modernized uh Philjepps, they can uh transition into using the e-bidding facility. Meaning hindi lang yung nanalong bidder yung pwede yung ma-check, pero kahit na yung mga uh competing bids. So you can check actually uh all of these matters uh and and we need to support uh the transition of the agencies into the e-bidding facility. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we will look into uh possible transparency and uh uh freedom of information provisions in in this measure. But I guess the mother uh code must be the freedom of information measure, no, the bill? Uh yes, sir, Justice.
We have been uh having talks with DPWH, DICT, CICC, uh Agriculture Health, DEPED, LRA, DTI, COA, BIR, SEC, uh DOJ, OSG. We have been talking with them for the last uh almost thirty days and uh we have come to the common effort that we will coordinate everything. So uh we will be able to address all the pla- and address and address the holes, the loopholes in the system. And uh right now, we already have the full support of the PNP. So every barrio or every city where there is a PNP will be able, they will be able to verify for us if there is such a flood control project in that area. So that was uh the, eh that was organized yesterday. We agreed to that already yesterday. Will be util- utilizing the seventeen drones of the PNP.
Seventeen?
Yes, seventeen, seventeen regions and seventeen drones.
Okay, okay, thank you. Yes, uh Sec Babes.
Uh may I just follow up on the uh discussion as far as participation of the communities? Uh you may want to consider in a provision of the IPC uh to enshrine citizens participatory audit. That was instituted in twenty twelve and that was recognized internationally as a good forum for the citizens to be given a platform to uh review the budget, uh participate in the audit, participate in the review of implementation of projects. Uh unfortunately, uh this has not been changed. It's a COA initiative, but it really depends on who is the COA commissioner, no? But my suggestion is if this can be enshrined in your proposed IPC so that all agencies are required to institutionalize a citizens participatory audit so that everyone, all citizens who want to, for example, the Part Twelve Agriculture, then the groups related to agriculture can have a direct participation, Mr. Chairman.
Actually, this was a prelim- there was a preliminary discussion on the budget, uh the DBCC uh budget hearings, uh where the DBM was there, the DOF was there, DEPDEV was there. And of course, the chairman of the Committee on Finance of the Senate, Senator Gachalian. And we were actually uh proposing, I was proposing that in the GAA, uh there will be special provisions on uh citizens participatory audit. Uh so that is something that we're working on. Thank you. Yes, uh Senate President Drelon.
Yes, uh just in that regard, there are many good ideas that we hear around here. But so what we have to contend with the constitutional rule on multiplicity of subject matter in a single bill. May I suggest that all of these ideas, like the idea of uh Secretary Chau- uh Babes, the matter of the citizens' participation, may I suggest that a resolution of the Senate expressing the, uh, the sense of the Senate, that the president should implement or whatever, just to show support without the same being in the law because patagal din eh, patagal ang proseso. But siguro, a resolution expressing the sense of the Senate, finding as valid and workable ideas such as this for the president to direct the bureaucracy to implement it immediately. That's a faster way of doing it, if I may suggest.
Thank you, thank you for the suggestion. Uh we will file that sense of the Senate resolution. Uh and of course, with the su- support of the Senate President, I'm sure it'll uh pass smoothly. Um well, I think we have had enough, a number of uh provisions and proposals to chew on. Uh thank you to uh the esteemed resource persons who have contributed. Unless uh the Senate President has uh other questions or issues that he may.
No, I I I would just like to thank you, the chairman, Senator Francis Poylin, and of course, our resource persons. Uh thank you very much for uh this committee hearing that they have attended. I am indeed, um uh for one thing, I am uh amused and awed by the spectacle of the debate between the former Chief Justice and the former Secretary of Justice. I think the scholars of the future and the students of law should be listening to this kind of debates from such luminaries. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, yes. Uh for the benefit of the public, uh may we request that the committee report on the basis of the inputs in committee hearing today, and if there's no further committee hearing to be held, let the committee report be immediately drafted and it be calendared on the first day when the session of the Senate resumes. Request a certification as to the urgency by the by the president and have it passed before we start the budget debates. Because traditionally, the moment the debate is on the floor, no other bill is taken up. So I suggest, there is time, we can do it before the debate of the budget starts. Yes, yes. In fact, uh we will have one technical working group uh uh after this. Uh and so we would uh uh request uh our resource persons to submit their written uh uh position papers uh and that if they may uh send representatives to participate in the technical working group meetings so that uh we can uh prepare the committee report. And yes, uh that was the intention, actually. Uh the Senate will resume uh sessions in November ten. So in by then, which is uh three weeks from now, uh we hope to have that committee report sponsored uh and seek the certification of the.